All right, go ahead and bang us in right there.
I call this city council meeting to order.
All right, thank you. This is our mayor for the day, Ms. Braylee Noel from Crofton. And she goes to school at Crofton Elementary, uh, fifth grade, correct? Okay, she likes dance, being outside, anything besides going to school. She wanted to skip school and be here instead of days out of school today, so she wanted to change it, but I don't think her mom would love her. Oh me, uh, Mr. Crabtree, ward four?
Please bow your heads. Dear heavenly father, thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. As we go through this day, teach us that to be leaders, we really need to be servants. Let us here on council, as we hear the issues tonight, make wise decisions. Decisions that serve the good of most people in our community. As we go through tonight, just lift us up, we pray for our ourselves here at council, and also our great community. In your name we pray, amen.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic, the which sustains, One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We call on Ms. Chrissy to call the rope?
Councilmember Frances?
Present.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Marsh?
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Here.
Councilmember Craig?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Here.
Councilmember Meek?
Here.
Councilmember Lineberger?
Here.
Councilmember Kiel?
Here.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
And Councilmember Handy?
Present.
All right, mayor, everyone's here tonight.
Thank you, all righty, awards and recognitions. Like I said, Ms. Braylee Noel is our mayor for today. She is from Crofton and, uh, fifth grader. She, like I said, she been here for the municipal building this morning. We went to all the departments here, had a little lunch, and then, uh, the police department. Captain DeArmond come and got her and showed her over to the police department. Did you get to run the lights and everything?
No.
Chief, we gotta talk about that. But no, after she left the police department, she went to the fire department and Chief Futral and them took good care of her. Did they let you play with the dog or anything? Okay. And then they went to the sportsplex out to see Tony and them out there and had a good time at the sportsplex. Now, which one was your best part of the day?
The best part was probably the police department.
Oh, man! But no, we had a great time with Ms. Noel today, here being here with us, and we enjoyed every bit of it. Uh, we'd like for each and every one that would like to do this to let us know, we would like to work with the communities and the schools and nonprofits to see how we can move this forward. But our mayor today, Ms. Braylee Noel. All righty, thank you very much. And I need to call on Ms. Nikki Dern now for the Mayor's Scholar Program. And here she is at the podium, thank you, mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Knight, honorable city council members and staff. Really do thank you again for the opportunity to come and, um, celebrate our young people and our participation in the 2023 Mayor's Scholars Program. This year marks our 11th year of the program launched as part of our Partners in Education efforts. It simply would not be possible without the great volunteers here at the city and our outstanding partnerships with local school staff in Murray State University. The program in large part is an essay writing contest. It's designed to help promote the ever-growing Rotary Scholars Program. And this year's scholars theme called for students to outline the most pressing issues they face, along with suggestions on how to address them. Once again, submissions were very strong, with three middle schools countywide putting forth 58 student essays. In addition to recognition at their respective schools, each scholar is invited to a day-long campus tour and sporting event at Murray State University main campus next month. So tonight, we're here to honor all of those participants, but especially those placing among the top 10 essay writers. Uh, here, they will receive their cash prizes and our warm congratulations. Uh, so when I call your name, uh, for those students who were able to, to join us this evening, we're gonna ask you to come up. I have a check for you, and then if you will stand here at the front, because I know your families would love to get photographs. And, excuse me, so, um, beginning in 10th place, now those who place between 10th and, um, second place receive $25 tonight, and our first-place winner will receive $50. So in 10th place, we're going to welcome from Hopkinsville Middle School, Dominique Rucker. Next, in ninth place, from Christian County Middle School, we have Michael DiArmond. Eighth place, Chesa Leonar, Leonar, from Christian County Middle School. In seventh place, Emma Eastes, also from Christian County Middle School. In sixth place, Catherine Sandifer, also from Christian County Middle School. With Heritage Christian Academy, we've got Mia Cannon in placing in fifth place. Third place, also from Heritage Christian Academy, we've got Molly Cantrell. In second place, from Hopkinsville Middle School, Aza Ink Tugs. I skipped our third place, I apologize for that. Um, Heritage Christian Academy. Fourth place is what I skipped, sorry. Fourth place, Christian County Middle School, Madison Campbell. And finally, our first-place winner this year, earning $50,000, a student from Christian County Middle. Did I say 50,000? That was not a budget amendment we passed here. After all these years, I thought I could slide one in on y'all, but y'all didn't give it to me. Nice try, next time, next time. $50,000, we have from County Middle School, Ms. Co- Kinley Clark. So join me in congratulating all of our finalists and winners and parents, now's the time for photos.
Okay, I guess we're down to, mayor's coming. I'd like to say thank you to Ms. Nikki Dern for taking care of this program for us. Nikki will be leaving us on Friday. All righty, we need to go to now, item six, public comments, get these specs on so I can read it. All right, anyone like to come up to the podium and speak? Uh, leave your name and address for public comments.
Hello, I'm Hugh Ford, you guys saw me two weeks ago. I'd like to thank the councilmen that got back in touch with us, me, Chris Buckman, Amy Strickland, uh, about the chickens, uh, ordeal in Hopkinsville. Four out of 12 responded. Thank you, Mr. Kiel, for being the first. Thank you for paying attention. I don't see why this is such a big issue and why no one else is actually paying attention to it. It was easily, it was easily enough passed, because this is not a big problem in Hopkinsville. It's not, I literally go all around town all the time. There are no chickens here, so how did this get passed in the first place? Right now, I have, uh, 500 signatures on a petition, 200 online. Couple hundred that I got myself from work. My paper out here. And I hate to keep wasting you guys' time, I really do. But this is not an issue in our town. We have bigger issues, like meth heads running the streets. You can call the police on them, they're not, they're, they're not gonna come, they're gonna say, what's the issue? Well, he's in my backyard and he's talking to himself, what is it? But you're gonna tell me I can't keep chickens? Really? Everybody wants to eat, everybody just wants their own eggs. And I don't mind coming back in two more weeks to waste your time again, thank you.
Anyone else for public comments?
Sirs?
Counsel? I've been in this town for over 15 years. And there have been some chickens around, some ducks around. You know, people do what they do, you have certain ordinances, you do not let them fly a lot in the city limits, okay? Those of us who have domestic animals like this, keep them in our backyards, contained and washed. This is the first time in 15, over 17 years, actually, that I've ever had or heard any complaints about having a chicken in the backyard, because once somebody doesn't like the sound of a rooster crew? Crow, excuse me. It's simple. My family members have had ducks, geese, everything, never any problems. Why now, I do not understand, I please ask you to allow it, because the only difference is running around loose downtown. Please let them be in our homes, in our backyards, thank you, Patricia Myers.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Day, my address is 3910 Tanglewood Drive. And I'm here on the chickens too. I would like to work with y'all, I would like us all to work together to come up with a plan that would be acceptable for our city, that would have limitations, that would ha- already have it set out to where, you know, like there would have to be a certain amount of land, like Clarksville has it to where it's a half acre, or Louisville, excuse me, Louisville has it to where you have to have a half acre. You know, the, the run would have to be enclosed, it would have to be, you know, there would be, have to be per- certain prerequisites for this to, to be okay, just because haven't had chickens myself, I am aware of the predators, I am aware of the smells. And, but also in doing that, I also know how to go around that, I know what to do, how to build the coops, how, how to do all of the the wiring and, and pretty much everything. So anyways, I just would like to come up with a plan that everybody could agree on, a certain amount of chickens that could be had if one or no roosters, you know, what, whatever would be feasible for everybody to be able to come into agreements with this. With limitations, possibly with permits, because I did notice that some places have permits that have to be set in place. You know, whatever that it would take to be able to, to have this, just like we have every other animal, you know, it's like we have dogs, just like we have cats, fish. There's iguanas, there's bearded dragons in people's homes, you know, these would be outside animals in a contained, maintained situation. And if not, then there would be fines. You know, there would be things that would come into action as animal control, just like there already is. But under supervision, under limitations, under permits, I would ask that y'all make this acceptable for us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name's Justice Day, and that is my wife that just spoke. Um, set aside everything else, there's many, many people looking to get the healthiest food possible. You do your own research, you can feed your chicken, your backyard chicken GMO foods or whatever. That egg is gonna be better than anything you buy in that store. And you're gonna deny people healthy food in their own backyard? I don't, that's not constitutional. We prayed before the Lord before this meeting, the Lord says, he gives us dominion over animals. And you're taking that away, are we gonna pray to a God we don't believe in? I don't believe anybody here on this council will say yes to that. Because you saw, you put your hand on that Bible and you have to believe in the oath, or, or, or whatever it is that you're you're up here to represent the people, so represent them. He showed you what the people want. And it's people don't want, get what they want, they're gonna vote the way they want. Period. So we're asking, well, coming before you in a professional manner, trying to handle this the way it's supposed to be handled. And only four council members reached out? Out of 12? Y'all can do better than that, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Droul, 2107 South Main Street. And I am a psych nurse and a institutional recreation leader at Western State Hospital. Um, I know the last time that, um, some of us were here, a few benefits were brought up about having chickens, so I'm just gonna really quick go over a couple here, a few. Um, here's some of the benefits to raising backyard chickens, low maintenance, high reward, eggs and other products, backyard entertainment, gardening perks, family-friendly pets, sustainable living, natural health benefits. And this is where I'd like for you all to put your focus on the mental health benefits. They reduce anxiety and depression, they encourage verbal communication, they encourage routine and responsibility, they provide laughter, they lessen loneliness, they trigger fewer allergies in other pets. According to Clea Dana, and author of Zen and the Art of Raising Chickens, and I quote, "Raising chickens can help reduce stress, include, increase health and calm the mind, because similar to caring for and enjoying other pets, tending chickens causes the body to release oxytocin, a stress relie- lowering hormone." And we all know, everybody could use a little distressing some way or another. Chicken watching increases our mindfulness skills, caring for chickens gets us outside regularly, and watching their methodical scratching and foraging around the yard slows us down and grounds us in the present, providing meditative and meditative and relaxing experience. And this applies not just to adults, but to children as well. You know, the, the rate of our mentally ill people, you know, persons is just out, out, just really, especially since COVID. And this is certainly a way, something that I, I hope that you would consider, aside, especially aside from all the other benefits of it. And also, I'd like to add that chickens are recognized therapy animals used to address a wide variety of issues, including dementia, Alzheimer's, sensory disorders, psychiatric illness, depression and autism. So I've got a little packet for everybody that reference and gives a little more information, including some testimonials of people that use, have chickens to help them with their rental healthcare. Thank you, oh, one more thing, we would like, and I think I speak for everybody, for the council to please consider adding this to your next agenda, so that, uh, it can be addressed a little bit more formally. We can have the signatures to present as well, and any other information we can gather between then. So if you would please consider putting this issue on the next agenda for the next meeting, we would appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in public comments?
Hello, my name's Dwayne Shepherd, I live on Hope Street here in Op Town. Um, my issue was with the police department and how like, we had one police, I had an interaction with the police officer, he lied. So I'm going through extraordinary steps to prove that he was a liar. And our police chief decided to back up the lie. And we have no mechanism in town to complain about a city employee. But if you call the state attorney general, they tell you to tell the city attorney. But that man back there, who's head of HR, told me there isn't one. So my problem is, we have a dishonest city, we have dishonest city employees. And I just wanna know what y'all are gonna do about it. We have a liar as a police chief, because he backs up a police officer that's a liar, that erodes public trust in the police department. So that's my issue, and I just want it addressed. Why do we have no honest public employees? Why do we have no mechanism to complain if we have a problem with a public employee? Or are they lying to us? Those are my questions, that's all I wanna know.
Any other public comments? All righty, seeing none, we'll move on then, thank y'all for coming and speaking, and we will take what you give to us and take it back to committee of the whole and talk about it, thank you. Okay, number seven on the agenda is mayor's comments. Uh, March 24th through April 30th, annual, we have the, uh, international festival at the sportsplex, movies in the parks coming back in April. And, um, Mike, I believe y'all put in the wheelchair swing at the Debo Park today, ribbon cutting on it? Yes, oh, yes, we did, so you'd like to go by and look at that for the wheelchair swing that we installed there today at Debo Park on that? And, um, I'd like to say right now, thank you to Nikki Dern for her 19 years of service to the city and everything that she's done for, she will be leaving us going to HES next week. So everyone would tell her thank you before she goes, thank you. All righty, moving out of mayor's comments, uh, report from officers, committees and guest speakers. On that right there. Mr. Tom, how you doing, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you, mayor, uh, Ms. Mayor, council members, uh, was included in your packet was information regarding rezoning application that the commission received, this is, uh, 1618 East Ninth Street. Uh, the applicants are Barry and Jetta Payne. Uh, they submitted a request for a five-acre track, and many of you are familiar with it, this is the side of the old Kentucky New Era on Ninth Street adjacent to the Trail of Tears Park. Uh, the zoning in this area is I-1, which is light industrial, and they have requested a rezoning of the track to B-2. Uh, the planning commission held their public hearing, we had no comments in opposition to the request. Uh, the commission in its review found that the rezoning request was in agreement with the comprehensive plan. Uh, and the zoning to commercial was more appropriate than, than the industrial district. At the time, this was originally zoned back, uh, 40, 50 years ago, this was the edge of town, this was an industrial district which coincided with the existing use at the time, which included presses as well as a tower. Uh, those uses have discontinued on the site, and the indication we have, uh, from the applicant is they wanna use it for office as well as commercial use. In looking at this, the commission concluded one in agreement with the comprehensive plan, and the zoning to commercial as opposed to industrial was appropriate for this area of the city. Uh, the recommendation of the commission was favorable, if the council is so inclined to approve the rezoning, it would need to be done by ordinance. And if any, uh, council member has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Tom about the reo- rezoning of the Kentucky New Era property?
So if you all are in favor, we would need a motion to direct the clerk to prepare an ordinance for the next meeting.
Okay, I'm just gonna be morbidly curious, do they have some plan for the property, we have any idea what their idea for the property is?
Uh, currently, I don't believe we have received a plan, uh, they have indicated commercial office space, but beyond that, that is the only indication I have right now. But the current zoning is industrial, which the commission did not feel would be appropriate at this time for that area.
Right, no, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
A second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're moving right along.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, uh, monthly financial report, Ms. Clayton?
All right, the January financial report, um, we'll start off with the interfund transfers, we had two interfund transfers in the month of January. One was for a police advertising billboard campaign for $3,000, and the other one was for the recycling campaign that's been talked about. It never got completed in December, so we did that interfund transfer in the month of January. Um, that leaves a total balance remaining in interfund for this fiscal year of $8,851.
It wasn't on our screen, but we're gonna.
Okay, all right, sorry about that. All right, we're gonna move on to, um, our revenue side, so we're gonna talk about payroll tax for a minute. Payroll tax revenues, again, came in very strong in the month of January. Um, total payroll revenue in the month of January was over 1.8 million, that makes our total collections. That makes our total collections year-to-date for payroll 11,482,729. So we are above budget, because what we had budgeted up through January was 10,751,929. So we're running about 1,200,000, almost 300,000 above budget for payroll. Property taxes. Property taxes are also coming in above budget. We budgeted 4,989. Currently, to date, we've collected 5,146. And we're only through January, so we still have five months to go. So we're at 103% of budget. Compared to last year, we were at 99% of budget. So we are, property taxes are running ahead of budget as well. Our business licenses are also ahead of last year where they were. Last year, we had only collected 345,000 through the month of January. And so this year, we've collected 476,570 through the month of January. Alright, we're gonna talk about our fund balances now. So we'll start with the general fund. Collected year-to-date revenue is 28,834,755. Our actual expenses year-to-date are 25,313,711. So we have revenue over expenses in the general fund of 3,559,461. Now we'll talk about our municipal road aid. Total collected so far year-to-date from MRA is 404,904. And then our actual expenses are 551,65 through January. But when you add in our prior year encumbrances, we do have a positive balance in our MRA fund of 129,669. And the last fund we'll talk about today is the capital fund. Capital fund, collective revenue so far is 976,169. We have actual expenses. A lot of that was carryover money from last year because we couldn't get cars, and so we had brought a lot of the car money forward. So we've spent 1,843,964 so far. And we're still running a positive balance in capital right now, revenue over expenses of 435,697. As far as our departmental expenses, everybody's doing pretty good. Through seven months, we should be at about 58.3%. And these are like the admin side of things. The only one that's really over the 58 is on the legislative side. Our public safety, police, ECC, fire and EMS are all really close to the 58%. And then our public works area, the only one that's really over budget there is Parks and Rec. And I think they've been over budget several months in a row now. But we're about to get caught, they're about to get caught up to about where they're supposed to be. So total percentages, the general fund is just a little bit over. It's at 59.4%. Municipal road aid is running at 51.8, and the capital fund is at 46.4. So I want to talk a little bit about our cash fund balance. We started June 30th with a cash fund balance of 11 million, plus our year-to-date receipts of the 28 million, minus our year-to-date expenses of the 25. Leaves us available cash for January 31st of 15,383,756. And then the last slide is our unassigned cash fund balance of 13,310,284, giving our percentage of unassigned to adjusted operating budget of 37.9. And I will be happy to answer any questions you guys might have about the finances.
Any questions for Melissa?
Alright, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, we're moving on to item number nine. Approval of minutes for February the 7th, 23, after meeting?
Second.
And Natasha and Bruce. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Seeing none, moving forward. Alrighty, we're now in item 10, ordinances, 01, 2023. Public work tool stipend.
Amending the employee classification and compensation plan to create a tool stipend for the facilities maintenance specialist and to remove subsection H retention stipend. Summary, now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1 of ordinance 3, 2022, as amended by ordinances 9, 2022 and 16, 2022, is amended to create a tool stipend of $1,000 annually for the facilities maintenance specialist to furnish, replace and update tools used to service HVAC systems and other facility repairs. Further, section 1 is amended to remove subsection H retention stipend in its entirety. The full text of this ordinance is on file in the office of the undersigned city clerk of the city of Hopkinsville at 715 South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where it is available for public inspection between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday.
So moved.
Second.
Steve and Travis. Clerk gets called to roll their crew.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lineberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
And Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Alright, Mayor, that passes unanimously on second reading.
Ordinance B there, O-3-2023, Fire Substation 5 Bond Issue.
An ordinance of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of its City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, General Obligation Bond Series 2023A in approximate aggregate principal amount of $2,605,000, subject to a permitted adjustment increasing the principal amount by up to 265,000 or decreasing the principal amount by any amount for the purpose of financing the cost of the acquisition of a parcel of real estate consisting of approximately 10 acres of land with a single-story industrial building to be converted into a new firehouse. Approving the form of the bonds, approving designated officers of the city to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of a notice with the state local debt officer providing for the payment and security of the bonds, establishing a bond payment fund for the bonds, affirming the maintenance of the existing sinking fund, authorizing the acceptance of the bid of the purchaser for the bonds and repealing any inconsistent ordinances. Summary, now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. This ordinance authorizes the issuance by the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, of a series of general obligation bonds designated as City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, General Obligation Bond Series 2023A for the purposes of financing all or a portion of the cost of the acquisition of a parcel of real estate located at 101 Walton Way, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, 42240, consisting of approximately 10 acres of land with a single-story industrial building to be converted into a firehouse, paying capitalized interest on the bonds if desirable, paying all or a portion of the cost of credit enhancement for the bonds if any, and paying all or a portion of the cost of issuance of the bonds. Provisions are made in the ordinance for the payment of the bonds and the security therefore, for the application of the proceeds of the bonds for the establishment of a bond payment fund for the continuation of the city's previously established sinking fund and for certain covenants of the city with respect to the bonds. The bonds are to be sold at public competitive sale and shall mature or be subject to mandatory sinking fund redemption in varying amounts on March 1, 2024, and each March 1 thereafter through March 1, 2033. The bonds pledge the full faith, credit and taxing power of the city, and provision is made for the collection of a tax to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds subject to certain credits as provided in section 8 of the ordinance. The sale of the bonds is contingent upon the satisfaction of the requirements and conditions of the city regarding the project. As required by KRS Section 83A.060, the following section 8 of the ordinance is set forth in its entirety. Section 8, General Obligation, the bonds shall be full general obligations of the city, and the full faith, credit and taxing power of the city are hereby pledged for the prompt payment of the bonds and the interest thereon. During the period the bonds are outstanding, there shall be and there hereby is levied on all the taxable property in the city, in addition to all other taxes without limitation as to rate, a direct tax annually in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds as and when due, it being hereby founded, determined that the current, current tax rates of the city are within all applicable limitations. The tax shall be, and is hereby ordered, to be computed, certified, levied and extended upon the tax duplicate, and to be collected by the same officers in the same manner at the same time that taxes for general purposes for each of the years are certified, extended and collected. The direct tax shall be placed before and in preference to all other items and for the full amount thereof, provided however that in each year, to the extent that other lawfully available funds of the city are available for the payment of the bonds that are appropriated for such purpose, the amount such direct tax upon all the taxable property in the city shall be reduced by the amount of such other funds so available and appropriated. Need a motion? So moved. Second.
Tammy and Jane. And you got to call the roll.
Right. Councilmember Smiley?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lineberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
And Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Alright, Mayor, that passes unanimously on first reading.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving to item 11, municipal orders on 06-2023, White Drive Motor.
A municipal order establishing an industrial incentive district, authorizing and directing the retention of up to 50% of all occupational license fees due and payable to the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, from the salaries, wages and other compensation to be paid to the new employees in said industrial incentive district, and further authorizing and directing the retention of 80% of any increase in ad valorem taxes due and payable to the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, on real property owned by White Drive Motors and Steering LLC for a period of 20 years. Whereas the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky is authorized to levy and impose an annual license fee upon all persons, associations, corporations or other entities engaged in any occupation, trade, profession or other activity in the city for the privilege of engaging in such occupation, trade, profession or activity. And whereas the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky is authorized to levy and impose ad valorem taxes on all real property located within the city. And whereas White Drive Motors and Steering has proposed to expand and make improvements to property located at 110 Bill Brown Boulevard, Hopkinsville, Kentucky. And whereas company estimates an investment of at least $10 million in said industrial development, including the property, building, equipment, furniture and fixtures, which will result in at least 25 new jobs. And whereas said expansion will promote economic development, which will provide much-needed industrial space in Hopkinsville, Christian County, and will provide additional revenue to the city through the collection of occupational license fees and ad valorem tax revenue. And whereas as an incentive to support White Drive Motors and Steering LLC and said industrial development, the city hereby agrees to authorize White Drive Motors and Steering LLC and/or its assigns to retain 50% of the total occupational license fee revenues otherwise derived by the city from the salaries, wages and other compensation paid to new employees in said industrial district for a period of 20 years after the commencement. And whereas as an additional incentive and inducement for White Drive Motors and Steering LLC to expand the industrial development and create jobs in Hopkinsville, the city hereby agrees to authorize the company to retain through a rebate 80% of any increase in ad valorem tax revenue otherwise derived by the city from any increased assessment of the real property owned by company located within the district located at 110 Bill Brown Boulevard within the city for a period of 20 years. And whereas said industrial development through the hiring of new employees increases the net profits and occupational license fee revenues and enhances overall economic prosperity in the community. Now therefore be it ordered as follows, there is hereby established for the purpose of calculating and rebating occupational license fees, an industrial incentive district hereinafter referred to as White Drive Motors and Steering LLC, the boundaries of which are the company's property located at 110 Bill Brown Boulevard, Hopkinsville, Kentucky. The city council of Hopkinsville, Kentucky hereby authorizes a rebate of 50% of the occupational license fees imposed in levying on wages, salaries or other compensation paid in the White Drive Motors and Steering LLC Industrial Incentive District to new employees in newly created positions for a period of 20 years from the commencement of said rebates. Said rebates shall be paid to White Drive Motors and Steering LLC and/or its assigned. The city council of Hopkinsville further states that the occupational license fee rebates referenced above shall not apply to any existing industrial establishment located within the city of Hopkinsville that relocates from an existing location to a location within the industrial incentive district. And the retention and rebate of occupational license fees authorized and directed herein shall not apply to other income or net profits of White Drive Motors and Steering LLC or other entities within the industrial incentive district, and only applies to occupational license fees on wages, salaries and other compensation paid to new employees in newly created positions in said district. The city council of Hopkinsville further authorizes White Drive Motors and Steering LLC to retain through a rebate 80% of any increase in ad valorem tax revenue otherwise derived by the city resulting from any increased assessment after January 2023 on real property owned by company and located within the industrial incentive district for a period of 20 years. The city council of Hopkinsville further states that the retention and rebate of ad valorem taxes and occupational license fees as authorized and directed herein shall commence upon written notification and proof from company to activate said incentives within 12 months of the execution of this municipal order. And unless extended by city council, shall not apply in the event the company fails to develop the property within the industrial incentive district within 24 months of the execution of this municipal order, fails to comply with local, state or federal laws or otherwise fails to comply with the terms hereof.
So moved.
Second.
Steve and Travis?
Discussion.
Okay. Discussion then call. Crabtree?
So in looking at this, I agree with looking at incentives for larger businesses. So that's the what. I agree with the what. But it's how this came about that I totally disagree with. So I want to do something for White because they are making a significant investment into our city. The city council did not have enough information on this incentive. The city council did not have input into this incentive. And I can't go to the whole story because part of it is in our closed session. I actually found out about the incentive on the radio. A week later, I get in my packet, here is the incentive. It's as if the deal's done. Here, council, this is what we're signing you up for. Approve it. We have an oversight function. And if it bypasses us and we're given this, we can't perform that oversight function. So I'm going to vote no. I recommend that if you all feel the same way, you vote no. And I would like to give the mayor some advice. Bring this back to council in the appropriate forum, and let's discuss it as we normally discuss it. If we don't basically give a clear message that we want to partner with local, state businesses, it's gonna be, here, this is your part of the deal. You sign it. I represent the people just like you do. I can't do that if I'm bypassed. That's all I've got.
The other discussion? Alright.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
And you opposed?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item B there, municipal order 07-2023, Transportation Alternative Program Grant.
Whereas the city of Hopkinsville proposes to apply for grant funds through the Transportation Alternatives Program, a program of the Department of Transportation's Federal Highway Administration and administered by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. And whereas the city of Hopkinsville intends to apply for $1,367,033.7 in said grant funding. And whereas the TAP grant requires the 20% matching funds in the amount of $341,758.27 for a total project cost of $1,708,791.34. And whereas these funds are intended for use toward the construction of approximately 4,393 linear feet of new trail terminating at Tiebreaker Park. Now therefore be it ordered, Hopkinsville City Council authorizes 20% matching funds up to $341,758.27 and further authorizes the mayor to sign the Transportation Alternatives Program memorandum of agreement and all related documents for the construction of approximately 4,393 linear feet of new trail terminating at Tiebreaker Park. So moved.
Second. Amy, and who second it?
I've got, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
I was thinking, go ahead.
Appreciate it. So just looking at it, I think it's a good deal. Looks like a good deal for the city. So just looking at it, I think it's a good deal, looks like a good deal for the city, you know, if we're going to finish this project, but what I'm seeing is the twenty percent is required for the TAP grant, which would apply to the one-point-three million, correct?
That would be Mr. Tom Britton to come up and speak about that. He's the.
Yes, sir. The total project cost is one million seven hundred and eight thousand seven hundred ninety-one, and the twenty percent is twenty percent of total project cost, which is the three hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Okay. The way I read it, the TAP grant requires twenty percent matching funds for the money that they're awarding us, right?
That's correct. That's correct. Total project cost is one-point-seven, the federal piece would be one-point-three and change, the local match would be three hundred and change.
When I read those numbers, it's time, I'm just making sure I understand. Twenty percent, twenty percent, one-point-three is two-hundred-seventy-three thousand, right?
Twenty percent of the total project cost, which is one-point-seven billion would be...
But the money we're getting is one-point-three, right?
That's correct.
And we got to have twenty percent of that to get that money.
No, sir. You have twenty percent of total project cost, which is one-point-seven million. Twenty percent of one-point-seven million would be three hundred and forty thousand and change.
I see that, yeah.
Does the TAP grant require us to put twenty percent of total project cost because most of the grants come are twenty percent of the grant? So I'm looking, I agree with Doug, I'm looking at a sixty-eight thousand three hundred fifty-one dollar and sixty-six cents overage on what twenty percent of the actual grant would be. So I'm wondering why we're doing twenty percent of total project cost when historically we do twenty percent of total grant cost, and then if we have shortfalls, we can fund that money from any other place. I'm kind of, I don't know that I want to get on an MO with sixty-eight thousand dollars over the grant when we can source that money from other areas.
Okay. My understanding is eighty, eighty-twenty, and it's twenty percent of total project cost. We can verify that, check that, but that's the numbers I have, Steve.
So you're saying that, I mean, is there anybody in, your grant writer may in the room that can tell us what the regulations are on the TAP grant if it's, if it's the grant or the total project cost? Because we hadn't seen anything like this before since I've been here.
Yes, sir. Mr. Keel, it's an eighty-twenty match, so it is twenty percent of the total project cost.
Of the total project cost or of the grant we're applying for?
The total project cost. So the total project cost...
So really, it's not a twenty percent match? I don't have the numbers, so it's more of like a thirty percent match?
No, sir. It's a twenty percent match of the total project cost. So the federal government will pay for eighty percent of the total project cost, and the city's required to match twenty percent.
My next question will be, is this going to have an admin fee attached to it?
No, sir. There is no admin fee attached.
No, sir. We cannot ask for admin fee nor would we for this. The only administrative fees would be associated with the actual putting together the design plans, which would be the design professional who provides the specs.
So there's no admin fee coming off the top of this grant?
There is no administrative fee for us or for the city. The only money set aside is seventy thousand, which is the design component which is paid to the design engineer to provide the design specs as well as oversight of the bidding process.
And this, this cost, this overall cost of one-point-seven, we feel like that's going to be all-inclusive. Cameras, call boxes, everything we have to have to complete it.
Yes, sir. And one of the priorities we had were to make sure we had a complete trail design. So the numbers include site furnishings, also include emergency call boxes, bridge lighting, which we thought was important from a safety standpoint, also cameras and equipment, and we solicited those numbers from the city agencies as well as the departments that provide these services to get that in here to make sure it was included in the total grant package that we would be submitting.
How old is the estimate on the, on the forty-three ninety-three linear feet? I'm considering that's asphalt. When was that estimate?
We, the original estimates were done a couple of years back. As part of this, and part of the delay in getting some of the numbers, we asked for it to be basically respec, and so our numbers are within the last couple of weeks.
Because I'm kind of looking at Mike in the back, we saw what asphalt prices did when we got our new contracts. I just want to be sure that's included.
Yes, so we were very conscious of the fact that construction materials and prices have increased substantially over the last year and a half, two years. So we tried to get the latest and best numbers as well as including a contingency number in here to account for potential cost overruns because of the uncertainty of material cost.
And I'm in the same boat with Doug. I think it's a good thing, you know, to take that three hundred forty thousand whatever and turn it into a lot more. I just want to be sure we're not going to be coming back to the well several times. And the Greenway project, I would love to see the thing done. It's never going to get any, it's never going to get any cheaper than it is today.
That's my next question.
So.
Is this the final phase? This gets it to Tiebreaker Park.
This is where I'm wanting it to go to, is to Tiebreaker. I'm not worried about nowhere else.
This is where we get off?
Now, from councilmember, from the future planning standpoint, there are other phases of the Greenway. Down the Levers Lane, there's also a phase going up North Bain Street, there's an inner-city phase. This is the big extension that gets to Tiebreaker Park.
What we'd call Main Line?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Call boxes, how many and what's the spacing of them on that forty-three hundred linear feet?
I believe there were two, but let me defer to Ms. Bogus on that because...
Councilmember Lineberger, I don't know the distance. Chief Sumner, if he's here, he may be able to answer that question, but there are two call boxes that have been included in this pricing.
Okay.
And I asked Tom and them to make sure we had cameras when it went underneath the bridge on both sides so we can come and go, and we also talked about putting a mirror up when you walk down the trail, you can look at that mirror and be looking underneath that bridge before you go under it on both sides, so you do have a line of sight at all times if you went underneath the bridge on that too.
Yes, sir. The safety factor was a big part of the discussion on this, so we wanted to make sure we were including those features in the price or the cost of the grant that we were bringing to you.
I just have one more comment. I mean, so I'm hearing bridge, are we saying a bridge over the bypass or you're saying a tunnel?
Under, under.
A bridge under.
A bridge over the bypass would be cost prohibitive. I mean, you're talking millions and millions of dollars.
We're not, we're not even considering a bridge over the bypass. We will come out right there at the trail there, turn left, go down, go under the bridge right there, and have cameras, lights, even lighting underneath the bridge so it's lit up in the, let's say, when it starts getting, it'll be on electric ice with the lights come on, so it starts getting darker, got a real cloudy day, overcast, it will automatically start to come on.
Cameras under the bridge?
Be on both sides of the bridge, pointing in and out, both.
And that tunnel will be lighted?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
We included funds for the lighting under the bridge, yes.
Okay. Do you, I don't know how to put this, usage of this, do you see the cost bringing usage in it being used and people getting out there and using it?
Well, I think the connection to a major facility like our aquatic center, Tiebreaker Park, Stadium of Champions, I think that furthers the use of the trail because it actually has an end point destination for folks. So I see it not only being a recreation aspect, I see it being a connectivity aspect because you have a plausible terminus.
I hope you're right.
Yes, ma'am.
Respectfully.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I say something really quick?
Yes.
I feel like we're talking about this way too long, quite honestly. This is about a grant, not every little detail of the project, but we've been talking about this for how long, Holly? How long has this plan been in the works? I mean, longer than I've been around for sure. But I mean, the reality is if we want to utilize this opportunity to apply for a grant to try to finish or at least sort of finish the project, the way it stands right now, it's unfinished.
Right.
You know, there's a lot of people in this town that talk about the bridge to nowhere, and that's kind of where it stands currently. We have a bridge to nowhere, and this helps create it where it's actually connected. So, yes, people use it, but I think they'll use it a lot more when it's actually connected. So anyway, that's my thoughts, but I think this, it would be silly to not apply for a grant that could help complete the project. My thoughts.
And I agree with you.
Yeah.
Mr. Tom?
Yes, sir. Just to add one point, we have previously applied for this same grant. We applied for it a couple of years ago because this has been identified as a priority, as the council member said, for several years. When we applied a couple of years ago, we happened to apply in a very competitive grant cycle. We had also applied just after we had received TAP funds for section two, which was just two years previous. So we're hoping that we'll be in better standing when we apply this time around.
And the municipal order is, you know, the matching funds, they're not required to make application for this grant, I guess you're, they are required. So you've had the municipal order before?
There has to be, there has to be a financial commitment to the city, from the city as part of an application.
Okay.
Now, there are several decision points within it, you know, we're not going to probably get notification of award for many, many months, but obviously when we get the app, or get an award, the city has the ability to proceed with it or to decline it at that point, but there are decision points in the process.
Yeah, my point being, the municipal order was there, you didn't get the grant, the city didn't spend the money, I get it, okay.
That's right. Also, the money's to be spent because the length of this project will not be within one physical year, it will expend over a couple at least.
Sure, it's clear enough. Enough been said, I think I can move a question.
Right. Got a question called? Need a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, seeing none, we move forward. Municipal order, thank you, Tom. Municipal order oh-eight dash two-oh-two-three, HPD surplus property.
Whereas the attached list of vehicles were purchased for use by the Hopkinsville Police Department, and whereas said vehicles are in need of repair exceeding current value and/or of no value to the city in delivering public services, now therefore be it ordered Hopkinsville City Council hereby declares the vehicles on the attached list surplus property and authorizes the mayor to dispose of said vehicles by methods available in KRS eighty-two point oh-eight-three. So moved.
Second.
Amy and Travis, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Executive order number twelve here on item twelve, executive order twenty-three dash twenty twenty-three, Hogville Christian County Conference Center Board.
Effective immediately, Matthew Kim shall be reappointed to serve on the Hopkinsville Christian County Conference Center Corporation Board. This term shall expire January thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven, and we do need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Travis and Mr. Keel, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B, executive order twenty-four dash twenty twenty-three, Little River Water Quality Consortium?
Effective March one, twenty twenty-three, John Reed shall be reappointed to the Little River Water Quality Consortium. This term shall expire February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, and no action is necessary.
Thank you. Item thirteen on other, any other business brought to us from council? Seeing none, we're moved to councilman's comments on item fourteen. Any councilman comments? All righty. I call on item fifteen then, Councilman Crabtree for adjournment.
In all of our dealings with other people, we need to look at it from three perspectives: integrity, trust, and respect. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. Travis, all in favor? We adjourn. Thank you very much.